Welcome to the first virtual debate for the Edmonds City Council Position 3, presented by MyEdmonds News. I'm Teresa Whipple and I'll be moderating this debate. And Janice Carr, who you see on your screen with Janice, thank you very much, is our timekeeper. Thank you for doing that today. I also like to thank our sponsors who've been supporting our election coverage this year, and they are Edmunds College, James Russell, P L L C, Certified Financial Business Advisors and Public Accountants, and Office Tech. And these questions were compiled based on submissions from a couple of Edmunds Civic Groups, the Alliance for Citizens of Edmunds, and the Edmunds Civic Roundtable, plus numerous individuals who sent in their own questions. And I want to thank our candidates for taking time out of their busy schedules to be here. Welcoming Position 3 incumbent Adrian Frayley-Menezes, thank you for being here tonight, and Neil Tibbet, who is also running for Position 3, thank you for being here. Before we get started, I'd like to run through the ground rules. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Then I'll ask a series of questions, and both candidates will be given two minutes to respond to every question. After each question, the candidates will be allowed one minute to rebut their opponent or to add to their initial response. And that's after both candidates have answered the first question. I know this sounds complicated, but I promise we're keeping track. They'll indicate their desire to rebut by raising their hand and/or using a verbal cue, depending on how fast things go, and make sure that I see them. Only one additional comment per candidate is allowed per question, so we're not going to go more back and forth than one additional comment. And after the questions, each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement, and Janice is going to now demonstrate the timekeeper signs, what they look like. So she'll notify you when you have a warning for one minute. You can hold up the one-minute sign, Janice, and then 30 seconds, and then stop. Stop does mean stop. Since we aren't in person to toss a coin, the candidates will respond in alphabetical order, and then we'll alternate who goes first in answering each question, and in giving their closing remarks as well. So we're going to start with Councilmember Frayley-Menezes, and then when we get to the closing statements, we'll start with challenger Neil Tibbet. I'm going to be making that mistake over and over again because we've got people who've been in office before, so I apologize in advance if I've done that. So Ms. Frayley-Menezes, please start with your opening statement.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. And I'd like to thank all the sponsors and all the citizens that have submitted questions for this. My name is Adrian Frayley-Menezes, and I am running for reelection for Edmunds City Council. I was born and raised in Richland Beach. I've lived in Edmunds 35 years. I know the whole area quite well by now, and I would appreciate support for my reelection. Some of the things I do to keep Edmunds on track is I keep taxes low. I generally always vote against taxation because most of the taxes we have are regressive. And the property taxes, we have mostly harmed the seniors, so I'm not a fan of taxes. I'm here to ensure we have safe streets, and by prioritizing public safety and working with the police department. And I'm also interested in reinvesting in Highway 99. I've been supported by the governor of the state of Washington, Jay Inslee, Senator Maria Cantwell, Pramela Jayapal, Bob Ferguson, and multiple legislative districts in the area, plus mayors, and fellow council members, and county council members, County Executive Dave Summers. So I feel I have a good support around me, and you may ask why I have so much support. It's because I do have a lot of things that occur in a regional level, and I stand up. I work very, very hard. I've worked hard enough to preserve our way of life in Edmunds by keeping heights low, by taxes low, prioritizing public safety, and I think those are some really important areas. And hopefully, we'll get an opportunity to talk in a little bit about some of the different things we have worked on. For instance, this year I've worked on the Meadowdale Beach Salmon Recovery Project, community court. I voted against the emergency tree ordinance, and hopefully, we'll get an opportunity for me to discuss a little bit of why and what I've done in this last few years. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tibbet, now you can use your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Well, good evening. My name is Neil Tibbet, and I'm running for reelection to the Edmunds City Council against an incumbent who is seeking a fourth term. Like you, I love the city, and my wife and I moved here over 20 years ago to raise our family. Since then, all four of our kids have graduated from Edmunds School, and now my wife teaches at one of those Edmunds Schools. I've served on the Transportation Committee, on the Planning Board, as well as the City Council. And for more than 15 years, I've worked to protect and improve the things in Edmunds that are important to you and to me. I'm honored to have support from former mayors of our city, current and former council members, as well as many in the community who have served with me and alongside of me for many years. As candidates, we like to talk a lot about what we've done, and I think my track record speaks for itself. But tonight, I want to talk about what I will do as your representative on the City Council. I will work hard for you and your family to recover from the pandemic as we move forward to restore our sense of community. I will ensure that you have access to me and a voice in the decisions we make as a city. It is your opinions and concerns that matter to me the most. I will protect our housing zones throughout the city, as well as the public safety services that support our neighborhoods. And now I want to talk about my highest priority. We need political climate change in Edmunds. We're tired of the partisan bickering that characterizes our national government. We're offended by the way it has invaded our city. My opponent has contributed to the problem in Edmunds. She's divided our city, set a terrible example for our children, and we must do better. We must be better. It's time for political climate change in Edmunds. And if you agree with me, please vote for Neil Tibbet. Thank you for watching this evening.
Very good. Thank you for both of you for your opening statements, and we're going to move on to the first question. I didn't time it this way, but it is related to the last remarks. There has been a lack of civility and decorum displayed by elected officials at Edmunds City Council meetings. What will you do as a council member to restore decorum and collaboration on the council? And Mr. Tibbet, we'll start with you.
Well, thank you for the question, Teresa. I have a long history of working with a lot of different organizations, including the Edmunds City Council, and I've always worked collaboratively. And a key to that is the patience that it takes to listen to all sides, to get information from our citizens, to study the topics well, and then look for the overlap. I like to think that it takes first, an opportunity to listen to one another, and then to look for solutions, and then look for the overlap, and execute a plan that helps everybody. And I have an excellent track record of doing that. I've worked well with people around the city, including fellow council members, and including fellow council member Frayley-Menezes. And it's my privilege and honor to serve, having served on the City Council, and so I look forward to doing that again. And one of the things that I would also add to that is that when we think of our city, it's a large city, and there's a lot of diversity around the city. When my kids were in school, we had one child on the south side of the city and another one on the north side of the city, and as parents, we were driving back and forth. We know people from one end of the city of Edmunds to the other. And as a result, we've had an opportunity to meet many, many families. We've learned many, many of their stories, and that allows me to speak compassionately, to speak empathetically of the needs that we have in our city. And so I bring that as a former youth coach, and as a former athletic, well, what do we call it, sports club president. So anyway, those are some of the ways that I bring civility back into our city.
Thank you very much. Ms. Frayley-Menezes, do you need me to repeat the question?
Could you please?
Yes. There has been a lack of civility and decorum displayed by elected officials at Edmunds City Council meetings. What will you do as a council member to restore decorum and collaboration on the council?
Great. Thank you for that question. First off, since Mr. Tibbet brought it up, I'll talk a little bit about the Diversity Commission. Storm Peterson and I were the two founders of the Diversity Commission because we saw at that point that Edmunds needed, we needed to talk through these issues. So I just want to make that clear. It's about equity and equality. The decorum of the council meeting has a lot to do with the fact that a couple of the prior council members are not in control anymore. When Mr. Nelson won his election against Mr. Tibbet, he came forward with a progressive plan for the city to move forward in, and people jumped the sides. Currently, at least three of the people running for City Council are endorsed by the Republican Party, and of course, four are endorsed by the Democratic Party. And it was like that the year before that, when Mayor Early was mayor. We had a four vote, four or five vote to two or three every opportunity. And I think that's what's caused most of the stress. I can tell you that I'm not being nailed as much this year as now Susan Payne is in this last year. The year before that, when I was council president, it was a very hard year because of other council members' behavior toward the leadership. And again, this year, I'm not council president, but again, we have behavior toward council leadership and toward the mayor that is really not quite very productive. And I think I've offered numerous times to bring in somebody who can facilitate a discussion.
Thank you. All right, we're going to, again, this is...
Mr. Tibbet's got his hand up.
Oh, thank you, because I missed it already. Thank you, Mr. Tibbet. Please, you have one minute.
Well, first of all, I'd like to know who the Republican council members or challengers are that are going up against the council at this time. I don't know who they are. I, for one, have never affiliated with any one of the political parties. I've always worked as an independent, and it's disturbing to me that she's calling out political parties when she's the one with all of the political endorsements. She's the one with the PAC money from her political organizations, and the endorsements are all political. And so, you know, it's obvious that she's going to use that as a card, but I really don't know who the Republican candidates, challengers are. I have supporters from both sides of the political parties and everywhere in between. And so I really regret that she's using that kind of language.
Ms. Frayley-Menezes?
Oh, it's an awful language, Republican and Democrat. Mr. Tibbet, everybody on his website are Republicans, and I think...
That's not true. I'm sorry. No, that is not true.
Ms. Whipple, can you please ask him to not interrupt me?
Yeah, let's allow her to finish, please. Thank you.
He interrupted me four times with the Herald, so I'd appreciate if Mr. Tibbet can maintain his composure.
We will just allow the one-minute responses without interruption. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for moving forward with that. So, you know, there is that political line, and I think people need to understand it, and they see it, and there's articles written on it all across this nation. And it is what it is. When you stand up for things you value and you believe in, and other people do too, that makes a group or a party of such. So I think it's important for people to understand that Edmunds is a great place, and I think we need to move forward in a productive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up to that question. People have been polarized at both the local and national level into factions that reflect their beliefs. As a city council member, describe your specific approach to pulling your constituents together to listen to each other, try to reach consensus around tough issues, and move forward in an intelligent policymaking process. And Ms. Frayley-Menezes, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Teresa. Well, I have to say that being involved in the city, not just showing up for elections or showing up for a rare occasion, but being involved in every part of the city. I see people at every event all week, all month long, I should say, and getting to talk to people in the area. I'm a precinct committee officer for the last 16 years, so I get to know the citizens fairly well in the area. And I think it's important, and it's not just the ones that yell the loudest. It's not just the ones that are beating their chests and sending emails. And it's the people that don't have the ability to go to those meetings that we need to contact. We need to contact the people out here that are working hard every day, all day long, that have children at home, that can't just drop everything to get involved politically. And that is who we need to touch. We need to touch the people along Highway 99, where English is not their first language. I've worked on Highway 99 now for, you know, it started well before I was on council. I actually volunteered with the Highway 99 Commission. And we've been working on this for many years, and it took only changing mayors to get the attention paid to Highway 99 and the communities around it. And I think that's a very, very important piece for anybody who's supporting Edmunds. I represent 42,000 people. I don't represent 25. I represent people on every edge of the city, and I'm all over this city all of the time. People see me everywhere because I get out there and I talk to the people. I attend events. I'm there, and I think that's the important thing. I was there before I was an elected. That's how come I became an elected, because I was out there talking to the people, finding out what they want. So again, I think it's important that we reach out to those that feel left out of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbet, do you need me to repeat the question?
Please do, yes.
People have been polarized at both the local and national level into factions that reflect their beliefs. As a city council member, describe your specific approach to pulling your constituents together to listen to each other, try to reach consensus around tough issues, and move forward in an intelligent policymaking process.
Well, one of the things that I won't do is what my opponent has just done in the previous segment. She stated that all of my supporters are Republicans, which is not true. You can look on my website. I have over 200 people who are citizens from across the city, and many of the people who endorse me are longtime, lifetime Republicans and Democrats. And you would find a large diversity of political spectrum among those people who support me. I have, in my last campaign, I visited over 6,000 households. I have been in every single neighborhood in the city, and I am proud of the way I am able to work with diverse opinions and diverse populations in the city. Professionally, I work with many different ethnic groups, and as a council member, I will bring value to the council decisions by not bringing false information or misleading people. I will bring accurate statements. I will do my homework. I will make sure that if I don't know the answer, I will get expert opinions. I will ask good questions and make sure that the experts in the room have a chance to inform our decisions. I will always, always, always be effective with my time and respect the time of others. I will fight for transparency. That's one of my highest goals, is to make sure that citizens know what's coming up. They know what to expect from the city government. We're not going to keep them guessing about some exotic program that might come out of left field and be implemented. And they will know what's coming up. And I will, as always, make sure that people feel confident in our public safety services and feel confident in sharing the city life together.
Thank you. Ms. Frayley-Menezes, you have a response?
Thank you. Yes, I guess I need to clarify myself. I didn't mean everybody that supports Mr. Tibbet is a Republican. What's on his website, as far as electives, appear to be Republican. So you're welcome to go look at the website itself if you, you know, like to actually take a look at it and see. And I'd just like to address really quickly, why do you think the governor has endorsed a city council member year after year after year? Why do you think a United States senator? Because they see the work I've done. They understand the work. You will not find the governor probably endorsing, I doubt if he's endorsed any other city council race. Maybe he has, I don't know. And tell me, there's lots of Democrats and Republicans that are running in races. I just want people to understand, there's a reason why Bob Ferguson, the Attorney General, is supporting me. He's supporting me because of the stance I took on smoking, believe it or not. I have a nice letter from Bob Ferguson for the act of work I've done against smoking. So, you know, take a look at that, maybe. Thank you.
Mr. Tibbet, did I miss a response from you? I didn't want to...
Oh, sure. Why don't I say something? Well, yes, you know, one might ask the question, well, how does one get the support of a governor and an attorney general? It's partisan politics. It's following the agenda. It's getting things done that come from Olympia and come from Seattle. So if people want to look at my website, and I encourage them to do so, they will see a broad spectrum of people. They will probably see a lot of friends whom they know, and they understand that I represent all of Edmunds. I have, again, I've spent time in every single neighborhood. I've met people in every walk of life, and I enjoy the Edmunds that I look forward to serving. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next question is, there is a belief that some council members in Edmunds align themselves with political parties, even though the city's elected positions are nonpartisan, and that council members are listening to outside interests rather than their own constituents. Do you align your views with a political party? And if so, what do you say to those who believe it hurts your ability to represent all residents in your decision-making? And Mr. Tibbet, we'll start with you.
No, I do not align with any political party. I am very committed to our local city and our surrounding cities. I do have friends among city council members from our surrounding cities, and I've had good relationships with the mayors from Lynwood, from Breyer, from Marysville, and even in Shoreline. And so I have garnered support from people from across the political spectrum. And I think it's important that I listen to ideas from the left and from the right. One of the things that I've done as part of my campaign is I've used opinion polls with an email list that I have, and I ask people to contribute their ideas. And one of the interesting things that I find is that people are very willing to contribute those ideas if you ask them a good question and you take time to listen. And that's what I've done. I've taken time to listen to people across the city, and I've sought to add their voice to the important discussions that we're having. And as a result, I'm not dependent on a political party to give me marching orders. I'm not dependent on a political party to give me an agenda to implement in the city. I'm dependent on the people of Edmunds, and I am concerned that we are overreaching in some of the strategies, some of the commitments that are currently being offered by our city. And I'm very concerned that citizens are not being heard. I'm very concerned that their ideas are not being listened to and implemented. I believe that there is a very large middle in our city that is underrepresented, and I want to be a council member for our entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frayley-Menezes, do you need me to repeat the question?
Please.
There's a belief that some council members in Edmunds align themselves with political parties, even though the city's elected positions are nonpartisan, and that council members are listening to outside interests rather than their own constituents. Do you align your views with a political party? And if so, what do you say to those who believe it hurts your ability to represent all residents in your decision-making?
I align myself with a social service background is where I really align myself with. That's why I worked long and hard on the Coney Report to understand the homelessness because while Mr. Tibbet was on the council, the council didn't necessarily believe we had a homeless issue in Edmunds, although I continuously talked about it. But that's where I align myself. I fought hard to get the police a social worker. I was a 12-year volunteer at the senior center. I put into play a safe city resolution for our city so people of color feel protected and safe. I voted against the off-ramp to the beach, which I consider that an environmental issue, and had voted against it every time it came up. I voted for, let's say, public health, all sorts of issues through public health. You know, again, the Diversity Commission, the Marsh, you know, I actually do work. The only thing I can say that Mr. Tibbet did in four years on the council was to get a two-person sidewalk crew in play, and I congratulate him because I think that was probably a very good thing for our city. But that's the only thing he can be named for in four years of actually championing and doing something about it. And I think that's been a great benefit for us during the summer when they have time to do sidewalks. I believe in parks. I believe in our city to be represented and taken care of as a whole. We have 42 parks in Edmunds, and one of them on this side of Highway 99. And Mr. Tibbet's answer to that last week at the Herald was that we could go to Mount Lake Terrace and enjoy that lovely park. We don't need to have a park over here. Well, I pay property tax dollars, and so do everybody that lives along the Highway 99, and we deserve better in representation.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. What is, and this will start with Ms. Frayley... Did I miss something?
Yeah, Mr. Tibbet had his hand up, and then I put mine up.
Okay. I'm just going to kind of assume from now on, we're just going to have rebutts. So go ahead.
I'll go like this if I don't want to. How about that?
I apologize for that, and I thank you. Thanks to both of you for keeping me on track. So, Mr. Tibbet, why don't you go ahead and start with yours, please, rebut?
So, again, you know, my opponent here is being deceptive about me denying that there's a homeless issue in Edmunds. I have spent time, again, walking around the city. I have walked from one end of Highway 99 to the other, and I've been to some of the locations where homeless encampments have been. I've talked with constituents who are concerned about homeless encampments on their properties. And so I disagree with her statements. I've had homeless people invited into my home so that they could have a respite from the danger that they were in. And so I regret that she uses that kind of language. And by the way, people in Edmunds see through this. They know that she speaks off the cuff. She exaggerates and uses language. They, they know that she speaks off the cuff. She exaggerates and, and uses language that's imprecise, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frankly, walking Highway 99, that's, that's bully for you. But the difference is, I've actually gone to those encampments and fed people. I've gone to the homeless shelters in Everett and fed people. I've gone to, when they were staying at the Senior Center, and, and met with the people to find out why they were there. There's a big difference between that and walking. And I do notice the one thing that Mr. Tibbet didn't dispute was that the only thing he did in four years was create a two-person sidewalk crew. You know, for his finish, I guess, for, for what he was intending to move forward. And again, I congratulate him on that. But that's nothing compared to taking care of the marsh, which, again, Mr. Tibbet voted for a pave over of the marsh by reducing the buffer, not, not by putting in a truck to pave it over, but, but wanting a smaller buffer. I think that's a major issue for our environment.
Thank you very much. Next question. What is your approach to collecting input from residents and incorporating it into your decision making? Can you provide an example of where your initial inclination on a decision was changed by constituents' feedback? Ms. Freely-Menez, you, you can start.
Oh, that's a great question, Teresa. I, one of the areas that, again, I find to get input is by being a part of the city, by going to events, by being seen, by talking to people. One of the things that changed my mind was on the tree coat. That's a great example of it. We did an emergency ordinance, which I don't support, to keep people from cutting trees on their own property. And I, I think that's a travesty. We should have gathered people together, and I made that recommendation, but council chose not to follow through with it. I spoke to them about it and said, we need to have people, we have to have developers and builders and homeowners and get everybody in the same room to talk about this. But I wasn't successful in getting people to move forward with that. But that is one thing that I changed my mind by talking to people, people showing me their yards. I mean, I, how, how do I get information from people right now? I go to the areas that they live in, and I think that's an important piece. Just waiting for the 25 or so loudest, or the 25 or so that write the most, most around it, amount of emails certainly does not provide for input for 42,000 people. I'll just keep saying it over and over again. We need to be able to reach out there and talk to people. I held town meetings one year. I held, I held quarterly town meetings until people, I guess, quit going to them. Or, or Councilmember Buxness and I did. And we started getting less and less people. They weren't interested, so we quit doing that. I mean, I think that, that's an important piece. We now see the town meetings being held again by the mayor, and he's getting, you know, numbers of people at them. And I think that's an important piece to reaching out to the citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbet, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What is your approach to collecting input from residents and incorporating it into your decision making? Can you provide an example of where your initial inclination on a decision was changed by constituents' feedback?
You went silent there for a moment, Teresa, but I think I got the gist of it.
Okay.
We lost your audio.
Oh.
So, at any rate, yes, I, when I was on the city council, I went to all of the town hall meetings that our mayor provided at the time. Currently, I went to the town hall meetings that Vivian Olson held in parks and learned about what people's concerns were about the upcoming budget. As I mentioned, I've been in every neighborhood knocking on doors and meeting people. And currently, I have polled hundreds and hundreds of people across our city and gotten feedback about issues like what their favorite parks are, what, what the important issues are. Right now, on my Edmonds News and on my website, I have a link to a poll that I'm doing that is very comprehensive and it includes initiatives on Highway 99. One of the ways that, that I, I changed my mind was with, with reference to the connector. And by the way, the mayor was on the task force that brought that to the city council. And the council voted unanimously to approve the connector. Eventually, it, as it came forward, it was much larger than, than I anticipated. And, and then we also found out that it was on a nature preserve. Mr. Nelson apparently knew that it was. And that information was not passed on to the council at the time that we agreed to it. So, as I listened to citizens and their concerns, I came to understand that we must not build the connector the way we did, or designing it.
Thank you. Ms. Freely-Menez, you have a response?
I do. I'd like to talk just briefly about the connector. Mr. Tibbet and Mr. Maseros and Mr. Titzel and Ms. Christiana Johnson voted for the connector all the way through. And you should have seen the look in Mayor Earling's face when on that last night, whenever 500 people outside of the door of city chambers yelling about, do not do the connector. Mr. Tibbet changed his vote. He voted for it all along. And the mayor, the look in his face, I thought the blood was gonna run out of it. The other thing is, the council members, uh, town hall meetings that are occurring, that's not transparency. Because they're talking about budget, and budget should be done in front of the people. It should be done on a television where people can watch and hear and understand and join in on the conversation. I heard about the town hall meeting that was in my neighborhood. And it was, everybody who was running for office was there. And two of the, three of the council members and a couple of other citizens, and that's all was at it. That's not transparency in the least bit.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbet, do you have a response?
Well, thank you for this opportunity to respond to Councilmember Freely-Menez. It, it's, it's surprising to me that she talks about listening to people, but she, in the same segment, she also minimalizes the people who take their time on a busy Saturday morning to show up at a town hall meeting. And I, I went to four of the meetings and learned quite a bit from the people who were there. I enjoyed being in the settings that people were concerned about and hearing what they wanted to bring in terms of consideration for the city budget. In terms of transparency, we weren't asking people to speak to any particular issue. We were asking them to give input on some budget items that may or may not be coming up in the budget. And so it's not a matter of transparency or lack of transparency. It's a matter of listening to what people have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Freely-Menez?
She already had her chance to rebut.
Did I, did I go out of order on that one?
You did. He, he was second to rebut, but I'm still gonna rebut what he said later, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I appreciate you keeping track. The tech challenges have made it a little bit more challenging. Thank you. All right, next question. As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide a needed check and balance for the executive branch slash mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it? And I'll start with Mr. Tibbet on this one.
Well, one of the things that I would, would do is I, I would make more use of council retreats. We usually have one every year. I think it might be beneficial to have at least two. And part of the reason for those council retreats is so that we can take a longer amount of time to either deliberate or get information and to learn about situations that are coming up. I think it's a lot harder to minimize the other people in the room if you understand more about their position. And so I would encourage us as a council to, to have times where we can listen to each other and we can learn about each other's backgrounds and what, what our experience has been in the city. I've, I've learned a lot from serving on the council. And I'm very thankful for the, the mentoring that I had from various council members and, and thankful that, that that will continue. One thing that I would suggest that as a council, we also take time to work through our packets and take time to even talk behind the, the scenes, not with like a quorum, but to be able to talk with one another about the things that we're learning from citizens, about what we're learning from the experts who have contributed to our packets, and use that information to speak openly before a decision is made on the council. And I, I find that sometimes the council meetings move so quickly, so fast. And that's one of the things that citizens sometimes wonder about is how, how do you make decisions so quickly? You know, from the dais. Well, one of the things that we need to be able to do is ask questions, get answers, and work with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Freely-Menez, do you need me to repeat the question?
If you would, that would be great.
All right. As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide a needed check and balance for the executive branch slash mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it?
That's great. And we usually do have two retreats a year since COVID. That has made that just a little bit more difficult to do. But, you know, generally, we try and have a budget retreat and just a general retreat. I think part of this, I didn't see this sort of behavior occurring under our, our last mayor, I guess. Only under Mr. Nelson, I see a lot of undermining, a lot of negative comments, a lot of negative complaints and from council members. And that doesn't necessarily help the communication with the executive branch. I think we need to have a better communication. And I, I never saw council members take pot shots at the previous mayor. But this mayor, it seems to be pushed out. And so I think being able to discuss things in a civil, rational manner is probably a very good thing. And again, having retreats, having, having those same sort of getting to know you retreats. I had two retreats last year when I was council president. I think it was last year at least. The years are all going by. But at any point, having that ability to discuss things with each other and sit down with the administration and have those same discussions. Because currently, it's becoming very adversarial. It's a very adversarial approach in it. That doesn't help anybody. It doesn't help the citizens, doesn't help anybody. And I, you know, it's, it's not transparent, I don't think, for us to talk to each other off the camera behind, you know, the citizens' backs. And no, nor more do I think that it's appropriate to take a budget suggestions and only take a few people that come to a, a citizens, not elect, not people running, but citizens, and take that. And, you know, I've got emails at this point from council members regarding what people were saying. Well, that's not, you know, the whole city by any means. And that's why I did not attend those, because I didn't feel it was, it was transparent to do in the budget.
Thanks. Mr. Tibbet, do you have a response?
Yes, thank you. So, again, Councilmember Freely-Menez, minimizing the involvement of citizens who took their busy Saturday mornings to come out and meet with a council member and, and talk about their concerns. I, I don't really get it. I don't understand that. And one of the reasons that people are upset and council members are speaking up is, is because of the, the pushiness and the overreaching that some of our council members are exhibiting and our mayor in particular. On one occasion, this is what I'm recalling, he, he wanted more emergency powers at the end of the, the year. And my opponent here worked overtime to, to get people to, to sign onto that. No one would second her motion, and no one voted for those emergency powers. That's one of the reasons that people are upset, is the overreaching and the pushiness that's coming both from our mayor and some of the council members.
Ms. Freely-Menez?
I must have not worked too hard at it, because if I got voted down, that tells you something there. But I also want to remind Mr. Tibbet that Mr. Nelson beat you and that he is not running. So, any shots you wish to take at Mr. Nelson, which I've heard you bring him up frequently tonight, is not appropriate. That's, you're not running against him, you're running against me. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, and this one will go to Ms. Freely-Menez first. The Edmonds Citizen Housing Commission submitted 15 recommendations for city council action. One of those would permit upzoning in all singly, single-family zoned areas of Edmonds, allowing the construction of duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes citywide. Do you support this upzoning for areas now designated as single-family residential? Please state your reasoning.
Nope, I do not. I also, as Mr. Tibbet told the Herald, he thought we could go up an extra story in height. I also do not support raising heights, nor do I support upzoning all the areas. What I do support is Highway 99. Highway 99 has the ability to take care of most of our housing needs in a transit-oriented development area, so people can get to work, people can get home. Now, that all being said, if somebody was to come to the city and want to, I suppose, put in a duplex on a piece of their land that was single zoning, we'd have to take a look at it and, and find out the reasoning why. I mean, you know, we just can't say no to, I guess, everything, just to be saying no. But I do not support the upzoning in Edmonds. I absolutely, I've, I've prioritized that for, for what I've done with Edmonds. Matter of fact, that's one of the reasons why I ran in the first place, was they were attempting to get another story out of the, out of the buildings around us, out of, out of the houses, which would cut off not just the view corridor, but it, it would create this tunnel effect with buildings. And I know there's been a lot of folks that have talked about around the fountain, we could add a two stories up there and put in housing. And no, I, I, you know, Edmonds is a great place to live, and I don't want to oversize this on housing. I think it's a mistake, and I absolutely, you know, don't see it as being something that's gonna be helpful to Edmonds. Now, that being said, I suppose, you know, we need to talk about the detached dwelling units. We already allow attached dwelling units. We need to talk about it. And I consider it under circum- circumstances, such as parking offs on-site, owners living on the property, you know, there's, anyway, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbet, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got the gist of it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, no, I don't support upzoning our, our single-family residential areas across the city. There's no reason to do it. And we have plenty of other areas in the city to develop our, our housing. We have a, an award-winning plan for Highway 99. It is currently the largest redevelopment project in the history of our city. And it's, it's worth noting that there are multifamily developers who are interested in moving to that space. moving to that space and and working with the city to do that. And by the way, earlier, my opponent said that the previous mayor did not take any interest in Highway ninety nine. And yet it was it was his administration that secured ten million dollars to begin the city's part of investigating how how and what we needed to do to develop in that area. And I don't think that my opponent is accurate and and I regret that she stated that I suggested that we go up a story. She she is, I I would like to, I would like to see the quote. I would like to know what it was about. I'd like to know the context. I have never, I have never recommended that we go up a story in downtown. I have not recommended taller buildings in our neighborhoods. The only places where we have agreed that more height is useful and and works with the city is in some of our areas where we have wider streets like Highway ninety nine, possibly Highway one oh four. And and some of those areas where height is not going to make a difference.
Thank you. Ms. Freymanias?
I suppose we'll have to wait and see when the Herald article comes out. If indeed you did say that to the Herald. And I was sitting there, so anyway.
I was sitting there too.
Okay, Teresa, continue, please.
Thank you.
I've seen a little bit of that on both sides, so we'll just try to keep it straight response. Thanks.
So the redevelopment plan of Highway ninety nine has been something I have worked on for years and years and years. So I think it's important to understand that that I have been the catalyst for a lot of this. I mean, the staff is doing the work, of course. I don't want to disregard the staff. But I've been the catalyst for the work along Highway ninety nine. And most people know it that have been around the city and have watched what's occurred. And it was because of unequity, you know, inequitable environments between upper Edmonds and lower Edmonds. And so that's what I've done since I've been on the council for almost twelve years, trying to get Highway ninety nine developed. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Related question. Starting with Mr. Tivitt, which housing commission recommendations do you support? I'm sorry.
To rebut if I may.
I apologize. Yes, you may. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Please do.
So, yeah, so my opponent thinks that that she has worked on hiding Highway ninety nine for many, many years. And I would like to know what's been accomplished in those years and I participated. See, it's hard. And I agree that she is an ardent supporter of that area. She lives in that part of the city. That's great. I appreciate it. I've always appreciated her her urging and yet I think it's time for some fresh thinking on Highway ninety nine. I think it's time for a fresh approach. She's had it her twelve years and I would bring my construction experience as a contractor. I would bring my my organizational leadership skills. I bring my facilitation skills. And this would be an opportunity for fresh thinking as we develop along that corridor in the city.
Thank you. All right. Well, you already got a sneak peek at the next question, but I'm going to repeat it. Which housing commission recommendations do you support and why? Mr. Tivitt, we'll start with you.
You're, did you say?
Housing Commission recommendations, which ones do you support and why?
Well, I haven't memorized all sixteen of them, although I have studied the reports. I looked at the the impact or the the feedback that we got from citizens online and I I would say the ones that that make the most sense to me are the ones that help us to cooperate with the region. I like the one working with Hasko and using their resources to bring affordable housing into our area. I happen to have a friend who lives in one of those senior housing units and she she loves it and would like to and I'd like to see more of that in our city. I also think that it's important for us to take a look at the ways that we're using the the land in our city. And I think that's one of the things that came forward with our with our commission. They they were trying to be creative in terms of bringing forward ideas that the council should consider. And I think that's one reason why that I should be on the council in the next season. I have experience in working with different cities. I've worked in over a dozen cities, actually a couple dozen cities in their planning efforts. And I think it would be worth considering what citizens have brought forward. I do. I I find it puzzling, for example, though, that that childcare was part of the housing strategy and the policies that they wanted the council to consider. I don't really see how childcare fits into housing strategies.
Thank you. Ms. Freymanias, do you need me to repeat that question?
I do not. I think one step at a time, one area at a time. I mean, the only thing that I can say off the top of my head that I'm willing to look at at this point is detached dwelling units. I, my recommendation has been that we take this back to the citizens for an advisory vote like Muckel Teo did. And let's see what people in this city want to do. Again, that's getting input. Not getting input from the twenty five people or the ten people that go to the park or but getting input from the forty two thousand people that live here. And it's an advisory vote. It doesn't require anything, but I think Muckel Teo did it and it was very successful. For Muckel Teo because they found out exactly what their citizens want. And I think that's the way we should move forward with this. This is a very serious topic. I don't take this lightly. I'm the only council member that lives up in this area. I don't live in the bowl. I don't live in the view corridor. I am in the working class neighborhoods of Edmonds and just about all of my neighbors are people of color or have people of color in their homes. And it's a different sort of world up here. And I think to 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 bring Mr. Tivitt into an office where he could be another one of the city council members that don't understand what it's like to live along the corridor, I think is 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 an issue in its own self. So that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tivitt, do you have a rebuttal?
Well, yes, and I don't think you have to live along a corridor where where the largest redevelopment project in the history of our city is happening to appreciate the importance of it and to invest and prioritize time in that area. I don't happen to live in the bowl. I do enjoy a view of the 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 waterfront. However, I do have to climb a thirty five foot ladder and and stand on my roof to see it, so I don't do it very often. And my neighbors are people of color as well. My wife's family is from Mexico. And we we have a large appreciation for the diversity of our city. My wife happens to teach at a school that's right alongside of those neighborhoods. And we know firsthand what it's like for immigrant families and for people to make their way in Edmonds. We're very, very aware as a family about the diversity that we have coming to our city.
Thank you, Ms. Freymanias.
Yeah, I also, I also have a diverse family. I just want to bring that up and I've lived here thirty five years. I've seen our neighborhoods go and my neighbors have seen our neighborhoods go from from a very nice, soft, gentle place to live to crime ridden areas of Edmonds. You look at the police reports, you you, I can't keep stuff outside my house. I can't put leave my son's bike outside. I can't, I can't do most things that a lot of other homeowners can do. And yes, Mr. Tivitt, for me to look at Puget Sound, I would have to get on an airplane to actually be able to see Puget Sound from my house. So you know, this is, I am representative of the working class neighborhoods of Edmonds, which are the ones that two family household income that that are here. I mean, I, you know, you live in Seaview. There's a reason why it's called Seaview. Thanks.
All right, here's a question following up. Define affordable housing using your your definition of affordable. And give an example of a successful project in a similar city where it has worked. Ms. Freymanias, we'll start with you.
Great. Well, the affordable housing project that comes most to mind is the one at Westgate. Where for a studio is about, under affordability is about fourteen hundred dollars a month for a studio apartment. Where have I seen this work? I've seen this work in Everett. Everett has have has a number of buildings that are affordable housing and the housing's less expensive. And that's, that's what I'm hoping that Highway ninety nine will actually do once its development kicks into high gear and and we start working on the road itself to encourage people to come in and build here is that we will see some real affordable housing. So people that that are living on minimum wage jobs can afford to live in Edmonds. Right now, if you work a full time minimum wage job, there is nowhere you can live in Edmonds. And in particular, if you're supporting, if you're a single parent, a single mother, a single father supporting children on a minimum wage job, which in Edmonds, most of our, many of our businesses, I should say, are the lower wage jobs, the restaurant workers and their and their grocery store clerks and their, you know, they 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 make less, but they can't live in our city. And I I just I find that just very, very difficult pill to swallow. They could work for us. They can be our daycare providers. They can be our our staff at the hospital in the laundries, but they can't live among us. And that I think is is a travesty in its own right. So maybe up here, we could actually get some affordable housing that actually is affordable to the people that work in Edmonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tivitt, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it. Actually, why don't you go ahead and repeat it for me?
Sure. Define affordable housing using your definition of affordable and give an example of a successful project in a similar city where it has worked.
Well, I accept the definition of affordable housing that is put forth by our our state agencies and probably comes from the federal government that which is thirty percent of of a household budget. And if if it's over that amount, then it would be considered a stressor. And and so, yes, I I would say most neighborhoods in Edmonds are going to be inaccessible to people who are working a minimum wage and they're trying to make their way into the city. However, the places where I've seen this work has been have been in places where there are large enough parcels of land to do supportive housing. And an example of that is the Compass Housing Project that I saw in Shoreline. I I went there to visit. It is run by a nonprofit organization that has state and private support. The apartments are very small, but they're also very clean. There are rooms for people to learn job skills, language skills and improve their ability to increase their earning capacity. And I think that kind of center is is a great opportunity, not only for people to get settled, to be in safe, clean housing, to raise their families and also to improve their their earning capacity. And I applaud that. And there are, I believe, places in our city where that could happen. There are also places nearby where in neighboring cities that we need to partner with. We need to be part of a regional plan that brings affordable housing to our 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 part of Snohomish County. And I would work hard to make sure that our regional partners are engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't see any rebuttal hands. Did I miss any? Are we good? Okay. Next question. How will you ensure the critical needs of those who are homeless in Edmonds be met without enabling Seattle style issues such as public camping, trash along streets and related public safety concerns? Mr. Tivitt, we'll start with you on that one.
Well, first of all, I support a an ordinance that would prohibit public camping. And I think that there is the possibility of Seattle cracks down on their campgrounds that that people are going to be moving north and south from the city. And I want our city to be to be prepared to handle that. I was recently talking with some civic leaders and from the Everett area. They said that they took a an approach that allowed people to come in and set up camps. They thought if if they did that, then they could keep an eye on them. And if it was centered in one area, it would work out fine. But the conclusion was that more and more people came, it 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 attracted more and it became unmanageable. And so they had to close it down. So I, you know, offering campsites, places for people to to hang out is is not not a good option. I do like the fact that we now have resources in our city for social services. I also think that we need to expand those social services that would be offered through Verdant Health, for example. I understand that they have one social worker and they could have more. Verdant offers some tremendous resources. Another resource is the Volunteers of America Center that's being developed up on one ninety six. They have some tremendous resources to help people stay in their homes. And when when that program comes to pass, they're going to have lawyers and and other people available to help people stay in their homes. And then finally, Homage, the center, which is also on one ninety six, offers a meal program. And I traveled with them delivering meals to people in Edmonds. And it gave them an opportunity to get warm meals, to have a a conversation with someone who stopped by and offered a friendly word and and helped them, in one case, fix a problem with with a device that wasn't working well. So these are some of the regional opportunities we have to partner with.
Thank you. Ms. Freymanias, do you need me to repeat the question?
I don't. I think I've got a pretty good grip on this this topic. Well, first off, I had a meeting today. The city had a meeting on the issue of homelessness and it was accompanied by three or four folks from the different churches, the Edmonds Police Department, somebody from City Hall, our attorneys, the YMCA. I mean, it was a huge group of people that are now part of a group that's looking at what can we do? Now, first off, nobody wants us to look like Seattle. I was down in Seattle a couple of days ago and it was unbelievable. And part of the problem, I think, with Seattle has been is that Seattle didn't do anything to begin with. They just kind of let it sit until it it over swamped their city. And now and now they're really caught in a position where what do they do, you know? And just so so Mr. Tivitt is aware, it, there's a Supreme Court decision, and I think it's out of Idaho regarding homelessness on camping on public property that you can't remove them if they belong to your city unless you can provide them some shelter. And it has to be better shelter than the living situation they're in. So if they're living in a city park, we have to provide some level of shelter. So that will come up much more later. We will talk about that. But I created, I worked very hard to get this program. But I created, I worked very hard to get this program going over the years because there was a lot of pushback that, you know, let the churches do it, let whoever else do it from the city council. And it took having this mayor and some of the new council members to say, no, 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 we need to do something about this. So I appreciate the fact that they approved my budget request, which was a social worker. The year before that, they approved my budget request, which was a, a, a manager.
Thank you. Any rebuttals from either one of you?
Yes.
Mr. Tibbet?
Thank you. Yes. Yes, I, I agree that, that having social workers with, especially with our police department who can meet with people who are on the streets is, is great. I appreciate that information that my opponent provided with regard to a Supreme Court decision. I also understand that there are people, if, if they want to get off the streets, if they want to move from a city park, for example, Snohomish County has resources to house those people and they have treatment programs. And I was told that this week in a meeting that I had with other Snohomish County leaders. And in, in some cases, people don't want to leave. They don't want to move. And they, and if that's the case and they're occupying a city park and they have options, but they're not taking them, that's where I think we need to provide an alternate way for them to move on. And that's one reason why I support an ordinance that prohibits public camping.
Thank you. Ms. Freely-Menez, did you have a rebuttal?
Sure. Really quickly, part of the group that we're working with now in the city, actually, one of the charges we have is to look at changing the codes around camping. But that's going to be a, a serious issue that's going to take a little bit of time to, to complete. But I'd kind of like to finish what I was saying, I suppose. So in bringing in the social worker, we're also getting, they're coming from Compass. And because it's more, it's more than just homeless, it's mentally ill, it's seniors, it's people with disabilities. It's all ki- it's, it's all kinds of people. Matter of fact, we heard from the fire department today that almost all the, about a high percentage of the calls they get are from seniors. Seniors are really in some trouble at this point because they can't live off of their social security anymore. So, you know, there's, there's a ton of issues with this, with mental health, drug addiction. And we need to have the resources of somebody like from Compass who can get them into programs. And by the way, Everett beds are filled. We can't get anybody into Everett because they're, 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 they're filled.
Thank you. Next question. The BNSF Railway recently confirmed that, starting in twenty twenty-three, it will be installing a second track next to the existing track that runs along the Edmonds waterfront. This raises a host of questions about the impacts ferry, bus, and Amtrak traffic, the ongoing safety issues related to the Edmonds waterfront access during emergencies, and the environmental effects on the Edmonds marsh. What should the city council be doing now to plan for this second track? And what specific steps would you take to address these concerns? And we'll start with Ms. Freely-Menez.
Great question, Teresa. Again, it goes back to how do we get people back and forth o- over an emergency access? It isn't about downloading the ferry system to travel, you know, through our small neighborhoods of Edmonds. This really has to do with, with looking at ways to move people in an emergent situation to, to provide emergency equipment on one side or the other. These are just a number of ideas that, that we've heard. And yeah, that double tracking is going to be a problem. It's going to be a problem for the ferry system. It's going to be a problem for the senior center, for people going to and fro. It's going to be a problem for the people that want to get to their boats, you know, or the restaurants on the waterfront when it's a double track situation. So, you know, we're going to have to, to, to look at this as it moves forward and whether we provide some sort of an elevator that goes up and over and, you know, a bridge, a footbridge or something, we're going to have to figure something out along this. And, and I am concerned about the impact on the marsh. I mean, I think that double track is going to, we already know that, that, that the single track that's there picks up a lot of dirt and, and coal and, and lots of stuff that actually gets into the marsh. So what's it going to happen when we have a double track there? I mean, there's, you know, this is a pretty serious issue. But then again, since I've been on council, they keep saying they were going to double track. I've heard that, oh, I don't know, probably three or four times since I've been on council that, that they're going to double track. So we'll have to, I suppose, wait and see if they're really serious about it this time or if they're not. But I, I have a lot of concerns regarding this double track going in and the safety issues itself. But I'm not interested in a thirty million dollar freeway off-ramp either.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbet.
Well, here's something that, that I agree with, with my opponent. We, we both agree that it's, it's going to be a problem that's going to take a lot of deliberation. And I appreciate the fact that she's identified most of them. So I won't go over that because I agree with her. However, I would like to point out that we are overdue for a, a citywide conversation about our waterfront. So it's not just double tracking. It's also about how we have access. It's about the, the restaurants and the businesses that locate along the waterfront. And it's also how people are able to live and work on, along the waterfront. So we're, we're very overdue for that in, in part of our planning process. And I'm, I'm, this idea actually came up at one of the open houses that my, my opponent has been denigrating. And I think it's important for us to listen to constituents who do have a concern about these areas. And one of the suggestions was, let's have a, a conversation about our waterfront. And, and it, since our comprehensive plan is coming up, I think that it's a great opportunity for us to have that conversation. I think it's a great opportunity to look at solutions like an, like an elevator. It's, it's a great opportunity to look at how we daylight Willow Creek and, and restore habitat around the marsh. It's a great opportunity even to talk about what the, the threats are to, to the marsh. And so I, I'm looking forward to that. I think it's time for some fresh thinking. And I'm looking forward to the citizens being involved. They, we know that they care about the waterfront. They love the Marina Park. That's one of the pieces of feedback that I've been getting. They love going to the waterfront. And by the way, people from other cities come to, to our waterfront. So it's, it's, it's a destination.
Thank you. Ms. Freely-Menez, you have a rebuttal?
I do. I, I, I take issue with Mr. Tibbet talking about the, the, the small little groups of city council members running for office as saying, I denigrate their open house, which isn't what it is. The issue is, it was characterized as budgeting. And to me, it was not transparent again. And if you want to check the email, you can see everything's been written up and sent to council. And so, again, we have behind-the-scenes non-transparency with this group of people that are, that are planning for the future of Edmonds. I think everything should be out in the open and in the public and people should hear the comments. And especially when it comes to budget, because those are taxpayer dollars. And I believe that taxpayers deserve better than having people make discussions in small groups in parks and then calling it me denigrating the open house.
Mr. Tibbet, do you have a reply?
I have no reply.
All right. Move on to the next question then. The city council has put great emphasis on protecting critical areas in Edmonds. As a council member, what would you require in administering critical area studies and State Environmental Policy Act requirements governing development? Further, how do you propose protecting the integrity of analyzing critical areas given pressure from outside parties such as consultants for developers working to influence city staff? Mr. Tibbet, we'll start with you.
Well, my exposure to critical area ordinance started when I was on the planning board. And so I had quite a bit of exposure to that. When I was on the planning board, I chaired several public hearings on, on these topics. And it was very important for the planning board to hear it. And, and, and I worked hard to, not only to listen to citizens, but also to incorporate those comments into the recommendations that we provided to the city council. One of the major hearings that I heard when I was on the planning board was the tree code. And people are very concerned about an overreach by the city with regard to trees. And, and yet, the tree board brought forward some ideas that were worth looking at. And so we need to use our hearing process. I agree with the, this, the, the work that our city has done, both at a planning board level to utilize that and then to bring forward recommendations for the council to hear and then to get, again, citizen feedback. I, with regard to consultants, I understand that consultants are often needed to provide expertise in an area that, that our staff currently doesn't have or to take on projects that they don't have time for. And as a result, I, I, as a council member, I want to scrutinize the contracts that we have. I've done that in the past. I have sat on committee meetings where we discussed which consultants we would want and which ones we would recommend to the council. And so I, I think that we want, will want to use consultants, but we also need to be careful about which ones we choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Freely-Menez?
Would you repeat the question?
Happy to do it. The city council has put great emphasis on protecting critical areas in Edmonds. As a council member, what would you require in administering critical area studies and State Environmental Policy Act requirements governing development? Further, how do you propose protecting the integrity of analyzing critical areas given pressure from outside parties such as consultants for developers working to influence city staff?
Boy, that's a good one. I've always been environmentally sensitive in, in protecting critical areas in particular. I do, I, you know, I think it's a great question to talk about consultants and consultants and outside pressures perhaps. I mean, when you start getting there, it's like, well, who do you believe? I mean, council cannot be specialists in every area that there is. I mean, we certainly do our homework. We certainly look at, at the various things that we have the ability to look at or we have our staff, you know, give us reports on it so we can understand a little bit better. But there is a point that you've got to be able to, to trust somebody, but have a level, I guess, of interest in to double check, I guess, what they're doing. I think, you know, and I, I understand why this question's been brought up. I mean, I, I, I get it. I, I know there's been a lot of folks that have talked about the consultants aren't doing good jobs. And, and but is that for council to measure? I'm not quite sure it is. I, because I don't think we have the, the skills and the abilities, nor should we actually have the skills and, and the abilities to measure it. So I suppose just a check and balance with our own department and our staff that could do that level of work for us. I mean, I've always been, been very good, you know, with, with environmental stuff to include the buffer around the marsh, which I think is a really big piece to this of the day lighting of, of the creek and protecting the area around the marsh. I mean, we have seen that to be a very, very important piece for one of the only saltwater marshes on Puget Sound. Really, not the only one, but certainly very few.
Okay. Rebuttal, Mr. Tibbet?
Not so much a rebuttal as just additional information. I, I agree with my opponent here that we, that council members cannot always be specialists in everything. And we do need to have people who are very well informed. And sometimes there are city staff and sometimes they're from outside, the city staff. The difficulty comes when we're hiring consultants to facilitate meetings. And sometimes those facilitators come with a bias that we need to be aware of. And we need to utilize more of our city staff to help with communication, to help with website support and to make sure that the communication is going out. And this is one of the ways that I can help as, as a council member. That's a, a big part of my profession is facilitating discussions, working with organizations, and making sure that we have agreement on, on issues from a wide variety of people.
Thanks. Anything you want to add, Ms. Freely-Menez?
Well, when he talks about his work, I was sent a piece regarding, it says Neil Tibbet, Executive Director of Leadership On-Ramp Church Planted. And then there's, and this is on his website, apparently. It talks about leadership on ramp, key biblical beliefs to follow, started by Billy Graham. And then kind of a disturbing piece says that the Luciana, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing that, movement teaches that homosexuality is a sin. So, you know, when you talk about what you've learned to do and how you've done it, I guess I have some concerns regarding your philosophical views on people that are gay or lesbian.
I don't really see how that has to deal with.
Well, he talked about having the experience of, and what he did in his private life. Well, somebody sent me this, so.
Okay, well, so given that that was really off-topic, Mr. Tibbet, I'm going to give you one opportunity to respond and then we'll move on to the next question.
Well, I, I will mention that Leadership On-Ramp is, is one of the areas that, that I work in. I'm also an HOA director or president for an association of townhomes in, in Linwood. And I use my expertise from the construction industry to, to work with them and to collaborate among the hundreds of tenants that we have in that organization. I work across the board with many, many organizations, some of them who support diverse lifestyles, diverse sexuality, and I get along with them. One of my biggest clients in years past, not so recently, is, is a, a major religious organization that is recognized as a, a gay and lesbian-affirming organization. And I work with their staff members and, and had great success and enjoyed it. And so being painted into a corner is not something that I appreciate.
All right, we'll move on to the next question. Describe your experience working collaboratively with other jurisdictions to address regional issues and name one regional project you would like to see the city of Edmonds develop with other jurisdictions. Ms. Freely-Menez, we'll start with you.
Okay, that's fairly easy. I'd like to see some work done regionally on the issue of homelessness. I think that's going to be an important piece that we're, because people that are homeless don't stay within boundaries of one city. They move from city to city. So having, pulling our, our, our resources together and working with Shoreline and Muckel To and Mount Lake Terrace and Linwood and all the cities around us to try and figure out how to move forward so we get to know who these people are. You know, there's a whole lot of issues around that. So that is something I would really, really, really like to see into the future for us.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbet?
Well, I think one of the greatest opportunities we have for improving our, our life in South Snohomish County is to work with our local jurisdictions here in South Snohomish County. And I'm proud of the relationships that And I'm proud of the relationships that I've been able to develop over the years and continue to have. I've continued to reach out to council members in other cities, even though I'm not currently on the council. And it's something that I look forward to developing more of is relationships with the mayors and and even with our county council. One of the things that that does concern me about the, well, cross-city jurisdictions that that come up with plans is that we start to have agendas that turn our city into having the same agenda or the same priorities as other cities. And it's important to me that Edmonds maintains its charm, maintains its integrity, maintains its direction. And one of the things that I think our city needs the most is some attention to our long-range vision as a city. I believe that the future of our city is going to have more diversity, more honesty, more creativity, and more civility. And as a council member, I will work to make sure that all of those pieces work together. One of the most, one of the best examples that I can think of of this future of Edmonds I just described is our community center. The Waterfront Community Center is a collaborative work with people from across our city. The county contributed. Many, many donors from outside the city have helped us to build the community center. And it is going to be a great place to build the future vision of our city. And I look forward to participating in that in the future.
Ms. Freely Manias?
Yes, um, yeah, the Waterfront Center, I donated a lot of money and spent an awful lot of time on that board, putting together the program that was there. I served on their board for 12 years up until a year and a half ago when I turned out on it. But I I do think that we need a community center center up here along Highway 99. And I know the mayor's interested and some on council are interested in creating the same sort of of welcoming gathering place for this part of Edmonds. Because frankly, you know, people that are up here don't want to spend 20 minutes in traffic driving down to a community center when they can, you know, they can stay locally and stay here. So so I know there is some movement right now at looking at creating a community center, which will also house community police, you know, police that are assigned to this area up here that get to know the businesses and the people and 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 what's occurring up here. I think that's important. And I, Janice, I only had one minute, so. So that's okay. I I picked up on it.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I I haven't been able to watch all that's going on. So thanks for keeping us all honest here. Okay, so.
Do I have rebuttal time?
Yes, I was just going to get to that next. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, listen, again, I agree with with my opponent here. It's 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 time that we have amenities along that part of the city. And again, we we are entering into the largest redevelopment project in the history of our city. $180 million budgeted just for from the city side. I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities to to generate meeting places, meaningful businesses that are worth gathering in. That inner urban trail that's up there helps to connect one part to another. And it's it's an exciting time in the history of our city. And I look forward to participating with that as a council member.
Okay. This is a related question that I think should probably only require a yes or no answer, but we'll see how it goes. Would you support collaborating with surrounding cities in South Snohomish County to implement a 0.1% increase in sales tax to support the development of affordable housing? And we'll start with Mr. Tibbet.
No, that doesn't sound like something I would support.
Okay, Ms. Freely Manias?
Repeat the question.
Yes. Would you support collaborating with surrounding cities in South Snohomish County to implement a 0.1% increase in sales tax to support the development of affordable housing?
I don't know, possibly. I think I'd have to see what the plan would be, where, how much it would bring in, where they would put this level of housing. I think I'd want to hear the details, which I do in most things that I I I work on. I always want to hear the pro and the con. So I I I don't generally ever vote for taxation, but I'd be willing to look at it.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Freely Manias on this one. During the past year, we have learned more about negative experiences of BIPOC residents living in Edmonds. What is the role of the city council in addressing racism and the effects of white supremacy in our city?
Very, very good question. This has been, this has been a challenge for our city. Again, I help, I'm one of the founding members of the Diversity Commission and served on it for five years. And we put some things in place to release press announcements for perhaps letting people know we know what's going on. But it's it's actually getting a little bit more challenging for people of color in our city because things are starting to get a little bit more ramped up. And, you know, potentially with the Black Lives Matter movement, it it perhaps brought some people out of various areas. I know I had, and I don't know if you ever dug it up, but I certainly had some very serious threats made against me because I was marching for Black Lives Matter. And I think it's an important thing for us to stand up as council members and say, we're not going to tolerate this. I know our mayor is very clear about he's not going to tolerate the sort of racism that that has been periodically popping up now and then in our city. And I think we just have to keep standing up and saying, no, we're not going to tolerate this. It's just, we just cannot allow this in our city. And you know, what's kind of interesting is that I've I've heard more problems in the city of Edmonds and maybe because I'm a little closer to it too, than I've heard in a number of other cities around us. So and maybe we're just more loud and vocal about it. I don't know. But I I really think that we need to stand up to it and stand up strong to it.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbet.
Well, again, I agree with my my opponent here. It's we must stand up to racist activities. And of course, she's famous for saying that with all the racism in Edmonds, we need to look at a police chief that was later turned down. So there there are good ways to approach this and negative ways to approach it. I I think our school districts, my wife is a school teacher at one of those schools that has a large percentage of people of color. Her classroom is made up of people who speak different languages. And the school district is doing a lot to to help teachers both understand the 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 background that people bring and that sometime, in some cases, the difficulty that they have in learning in a Western system. And so we're addressing some of these issues in in our school systems. We're addressing them in neighborhoods. And one of the interesting ideas that I heard come out of the the Diversity Commission was the idea of an international festival somewhere in in the life of our city. We 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 love our celebrations. We love our our activities. And and that might be one that would allow us to enjoy other cultures and have an international celebration and help build bridges. There are more and more people of of color even moving into my neighborhood. And we have, we often have dinner together. We we help each other around the neighborhood. And I, you know, I think these are, these are great times. I I the vision of my city of the city that I just mentioned earlier, it's there is is going to be more diversity in our city. And I think that's a good thing. And I think people in our city embrace that and will welcome people from all backgrounds. So I I look forward to some great things in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Freely Manias, do you have anything to add?
Just, I love the misquotes. That's all.
Mr. Tibbet, anything else before we move on?
No, go ahead.
All right. And Mr. Tibbet, you get the next question, and we're almost done, by the way. If elected, what will be your spending priorities in the next budget?
I'm sorry, you broke up just a little bit.
If elected, what will be your next spending priorities in the next budget?
Spending priorities. Well, one of the things that I've consistently talked about when I was on the council and even last year during the budget cycle is I did talk about the importance of taking care of our buildings. And we have buildings that are in need of repair. In some cases, we could change out old windows. We can change out insulation and lower our carbon footprint that way by with some upgrades to our buildings. And I also think that it's important for us to think through how we're going to budget for our our parks and our sidewalks. We really don't have enough walkways to connect throughout our city. And so I'm very thankful that we finally do have a walkway crew. They're doing a great job in building ADA ramps, making our city more accessible to people. And and I applaud that. I would support that. I prioritize it. I also think that it's important if if we're going to have a a a city that welcomes all people. We need to have parks that allow people with, let's say, different abilities, different interests in sports to participate together. When I was a youth coach, our teams were very diverse. And and it was it leveled the playing field when when a child from one side of the city got to play on the same team as another child. And so I want to make sure that our parks are prioritized. They we have good fields for kids to play on and that we have support systems for taking care of the youth of our city.
Thank you, Ms. Freely Manias.
Thank you. Well, just so Mr. Tibbet's aware, the council just bonded out money to actually do the building repairs on the city building. So that's already being taken care of through bonding. That being said, I would like to see some money put into the development of Highway 99. We know it's going to cost 180 million over time. And we're going to have to get federal and state grants, county grants. We're going to, we're going to be begging money for a long time to come. But to ensure that we're we're putting good money into things like building a community center up here, purchasing land, open space, green space up here. I mean, I, you know, again, I don't want to have to go to Mount Lake Terrace to go to a park or or go to Snohomish County unincorporated to go to a park across seven lanes of traffic. I think it's really, really important that we start looking at putting some money into this part of the city. I mean, and I'm sure as Mr. Tibbet knows, as he's been all over the city, that this part of the city, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have adequate lighting. It's not safe. You can't get to and from the one park with two parking spaces that we have safely. It's it's a position where we need to put some money into what we're talking about. And the biggest disappointment I think I had this year was a six to one vote on or six to five to two vote maybe on civic field and pumping all that money into civic field versus cutting back on the amenities and building parks up here, looking at building parks. I've heard every council member that's ran for office, with the exception of Laura Johnson. Everyone talks about, I'm going to put money into Highway 99. We're going to fix Highway 99. I've heard that over and over and over and over again for 12 years. The only person that has stood up in that time to say we need to have equity is Laura Johnson, Councilmember Johnson. So I I I I appreciate everything that she has done to help support the people that live up here.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbet, do you have any response?
Well, yeah, I'd like to respond to that. It was Mayor Earling who worked to get $10 million to start the redevelopment project. And those kinds of funds help attract more of that state and federal money. And I agree that it's it's a long time in in coming. And I look forward to to working on those projects. I'm I'm very excited about networking with neighboring cities to to cooperate with the redevelopment in that area. I I understand that my opponent may have some difficulty remembering about the vote for civic field because she wasn't at the council meeting that night. However, I believe it was a six to zero vote. And people were very supportive of the idea of completing civic field. There were years and of input from citizens from across the city. And the way I look at it is.
Minutes up.
Thank you, Ms. Freely Manias.
Uh, yeah, I if Mayor Earling got us $10 million, I'd kind of like to know where it is. Considering the only fund we were able to get to it, we were able to get the legislature to swap out the freeway off-ramp onto the beach. That, by the way, my my opponent voted for all the way up until the very last night, remember 500 people at the door. But we have, I believe, $6 million to work on Highway 99. We've had a little bit of money here and there for planning purposes, but we, there's no $10 million sitting there waiting to be used. So I'm not quite sure where he keeps saying that Mayor Earling did this when I I'm not aware that we've used $10 million on Highway 99. And if we have, I'd really like to know where it is.
Right, we're we're now on to our final question.
Yay.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a long one. Thank you for hanging in there. Without engaging in partisan or personal attacks, tell voters why you will be a better city council member than your opponent. And Mr. Tibbet, we'll start with you.
Well, one of the things that I would say about me is I have a very long history of working with a very diverse populations. I've I listen carefully. I work with people who take time to express themselves. I I take notes and I listen carefully. And I want to add their voice to the the work that we want to accomplish in the city. I always have looked for the middle ground that allows us to to find solutions that serve the most people for the best in in investment. I enjoy learning from people. And that makes me a a great council member. And I'm good at evaluating contracts. I spent 10 years as a contractor. I wrote hundreds of contracts. I learned how to negotiate contracts. And that was an important part of what I did when I was on the Public Works Committee, was evaluating the projects that we had and asking I what I would consider intelligent questions so that when we made recommendations to the council, we were making good decisions with regard to our public works projects. good decisions with regard to our public works projects. And so again, that's an expertise that that I bring. I also want to emphasize that my skills in facilitating conversations has gone over now to the digital side. And I have a survey out on the web, on my website right now, where people can participate. I have two people on my team who are able to help generate data in meaningful ways and to put it in a narrative that's useful.
Thank you, Ms. Freely Manias.
To repeat the question.
You bet. Without engaging in partisan or personal attacks, tell voters why you will be a better city council member than your opponent.
Because I know how to get things done, and I get things done. It isn't, it isn't about it's about knowing how to get things done at a regional level, at a state level, at a local level, at a county level. Some of the things that I have done, I've worked very closely with public health. I was one of the, Brian Sullivan and I were actually negotiated with Big Pharma for the drug takeback program that took us probably six, six months to do. And what has that done? That's created a better environment for all of us because we have our our drugs that are taken back to the police stations and the pharmacies. I created the homelessness fund and the and the opioid fund. So trying to ensure that we can give education to opioids and then came the pandemic, by the way. And then the homelessness fund that we've actually paid for our consultants with. I have done, I I have worked for Snow Track, the Snohomish County Transportation Coalition, which is getting transportation to people that are out in rural parts of this county and rural parts of our city, frankly. I've served on the PSRC Executive Board for the last six years. I've been in the Law and Justice Commission for probably the last six years. I voted to protect the marsh over and over and over again. I mean, I think I've 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 proved myself to be an effective legislator. I've proved myself to support the citizens of the city. I've proved myself that I'm able to contact people across the city, not just the loudest, not just the ones that are there all the time, but those that want to give input but don't have the ability to give the input. I I I believe in the city. I love the city. And it it, you know, I I do this as a labor of love.
Thank you. All right, we're now moving on to closing statements, and they are one minute long. And Janice will give you a warning for 30 seconds and stop. And since Ms. Freely Manias started first with her opening statement, Mr. Tippett, you get to start first with your closing statement.
Okay. Well, tonight I want to conclude with something about myself that most people don't know. I like to cook homemade soup from scratch. I add a lot of fresh vegetables and incorporate bits and pieces from the refrigerator that I find like bacon, and I put it all together in a right mix of spices, and it turns out great. I take the same approach with my leadership. I get a lot of fresh input. I incorporate the best ideas from the past, and I top it off with ingredients that get great results. But here's what other people do. They go shopping in places like Seattle or Olympia, and they bring back a can of soup, and they say, surprise, we hope you like it. This is for you. In this election, you have a choice. You can either have fresh cooked or canned, but you can't have both. And here's what I'm asking you to do. Help Neil cook. I would appreciate your vote in the upcoming election. My name is Neil Tippett. Thank you for watching this evening.
Ms. Freely Manias.
Yes, thank you, Teresa. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to the citizens of Edmonds. I mean, I think I've given some great examples of the work that I have done. Unfortunately, my opponent in four years, the only thing he did was got a two-person sidewalk group. I have actually taken the steps to move forward to help our city do better. And I think that's important. I'm I'm a public servant. I spent 33 years working for the Department of Social and Health Services. I've worked mental health, developmental disabilities. This is, this is my life is giving back to others. And I think I know how to get things done. Obviously, the leaders across the state understand that I definitely know how to get things done. I'm again, supported by everybody from all the legislative districts around us. I'm supported by Dave Summers. I'm supported even by Cassie Franklin, the mayor of Everett. I mean, I have a large support system. So thank you all.
Thank you. And I want to again thank both of you for participating in this virtual debate. And I also want to thank Janice Carr for doing a fabulous job as timekeeper. That is not an easy job. And thanks again to our sponsors, Edmonds College, James Russell P L L C, and Office Tech. And a reminder, the ballots will be in the mail around October 14th for the November 2nd general election. So be sure to vote. Thanks again for participating, candidates, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you, Teresa.